Good evening. Today is September 17th, 2018. Less about a little over three months shopping left for Christmas. So we're very appreciative that you're here with us tonight. And it's, uh, we begin our meeting as usual with a couple of things. It's been the tradition of this board and thousands of boards across the United States that we begin with a pledge and a prayer. Our prayer will be brought by our Sheriff Chaplain, as always. We appreciate him being here. This is, these are called solemnizing prayers. A solemnizing prayer is held at the beginning of a meeting, and it's for the commissioners. I'm sorry, but it's not for you. It's for us. And so we take what we do very seriously. It's an opportunity for us to focus and to, uh, to ask for wisdom as we do what is in the best interest of all the citizens of Rowan County. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Thank you, Lord, for the privilege to be here, Lord, and thank you for bringing the commissioners through the storm safely, Lord, and the rest of us, Lord, and we pray that you will just be with them tonight as they've had time to go over the agenda tonight. Pray you give them the wisdom they need, and thank for their dedication and love they have for Rowan County, Lord, and we thank for the privilege to be here tonight and represent you and them before you tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, as always. Appreciate you being here. Before we get started, would, uh, would like to note that Commissioner Caskey is, is running late. Many of you know Commissioner Caskey is a Charlotte police officer, and they've been working them very hard this week due to the weather issues that we have, and so he was leaving South Charlotte and is tied up in accident traffic trying to get here, so, um, just to let you know. Uh, let's see, do we have any, uh, I've got one addition to the agenda. Do we have any other additions or deletions to the agenda? I'd like to add, under announcements, item 2B, I've asked our emergency services director, Chris Solis, if he would give us an update on, um, on the storm process, and so he'll do that for us. Any, any other additions or deletions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then the minutes have been provided for us for the last meeting on September 4th. Motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Items A through Q and the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then, uh, let me see, we have one announcement, and again, this is from China Grove. You other nine municipalities need to get us some announcements. China Grove taking advantage of this. Join Daryl Harwood for the Second Annual Stand Together Music Festival to raise money for leukemia and the lymphoma society. This event features five different bands, food, a kid's zone, and fun for the entire family. This will be on September 22nd, from, uh, 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and it'll be at 333 North Main Street in China Grove. Go hear some good music, take your kids with you, enjoy the time, and also do something good for leukemia and lymphoma. And then we'd like to call Chief Solis forward to give us an update on, um, storm prep.
Thank you for having me, commissioners. Give me the chance to kind of explain some, uh, some great teamwork that, that happened over the weekend. First off, I want to thank Chairman Eds, uh, commissioners, uh, for the decisive action, really declaring the state of emergency, really helped us to do our job better and, uh, puts the county in a really good position moving forward as we talk about recovery efforts. And also, actually, thank you and Commissioner Green for pitching into the, to the call center. That's, uh, that's an important thing. The community emergency response team, uh, really helped out during that, that need, and, uh, I'm sure they and the rest of the citizens appreciate it, so, thank you. And then a couple others I'd, I'd really like to, uh, mention. County Manager Church, sir, thank you for your, for your help and your, um, accessibility and leadership through it, helping with some key decisions along the way. Makes it a lot easier when you have that support. And Sheriff Otten, uh, I really appreciate everything that your guys did, your men and women did out in the field. Not easy conditions at all. They even provided, uh, security to the EOC for us at, at this level, so that's, uh, a strain, and I know that they'd rather be doing some other things, but that's really important to us. Facilities, Mr. Don Bringle, always available for us. That's a really essential thing, ensuring the power reliability for us and, and just going forward throughout the entire, for the, all the county facilities, the, uh, the resources that he brings are, are essential. And then throughout the event in the EOC, uh, we did have environmental services with us. Caleb Sinclair was representing, um, his department, and then Animal Services, Bob Pendergrass, and both of these were really important for, when we talk about debris management and when we talk about sheltering with, uh, the, the pets and animals for all the citizens that potentially have to evacuate, um, he was, uh, we were able to work through some really great solutions for some of those needs, um, including answering a call. Mr. Pendergrass helped us answer a call for, um, helping, potentially helping VA, uh, patients, veterans, and their service dogs that always come with them. They were being evacuated from other areas, and, um, we were able to help the VA develop a solution for that. So, um, great stuff. So the, the EOC, as I think most everybody knows, opened on Friday at a Level 2, which is increased, um, activation level, um, a, a robust staff, uh, ready to handle any need. We immediately fielded liaisons out into the field, uh, to interact and provide services for the towns, the municipalities, uh, the law enforcement community and the, and the fire community, fire department community. The other kind of unique thing that we did was develop a relationship, a partnership between the rescue squad and Salisbury Fire Department, uh, where they teamed up their rescue resources to develop, uh, to provide specialized water rescue, uh, technical rescue services, and then that was coordinated directly through the EOC, uh, and we were able to send them out on, on a few missions. So we began, at that time, to just begin to, um, prepare for the, the current and expected conditions. Our liaisons out in the field, uh, brought us reports and needs from all the other, uh, agencies, and we just started lining things up. One of those requests, we requested and received from the State Forest Service Task Force, Specialty Chainsaw Crew, and, um, they were, the plan was to pair them up with Duke Energy so that we could, um, offer a really quick solution and assistance to Duke so that the, the power reliability would be that much better, a lot faster, uh, response to the community need. And they did help us with a couple of, uh, important missions, uh, so there were a couple of larger trees they were able to assist, uh, the local fire departments with, um, that, that helped towards that mission. However, um, that crew was, that task force was reassigned, uh, for, uh, some additional, uh, higher priority missions, according to the State, um, to the coastal area, uh, so some life safety missions, um, over there. So, um, we again engaged and we actually had, uh, the, I guess, the foresight to realize that we could potentially need a lot more manpower around, so we requested and had tentative, um, agreement and assignment of National Guard troops to our area, a crew of, of 40 people. That was never, uh, really fully realized, the State was on priority for life safety missions, and so, um, what, they were in a, they were assigned to us, but in a hold pattern, just to, so they were ready for us in, in case we needed that. So, um, that was, uh, available to us. And then it was, it was a lot of moderate activity through Saturday. Trees down, power lines affected, uh, some vehicle accidents, starting to see some power transformer issues, um, so the tempo was starting to increase. And then Sunday afternoon, of course, is, is kind of when, uh, things kind of let loose. The rain started coming down harder, um, the, the water started to accumulate in the streets and in the, in the waterways, um, and all along we had, uh, our liaisons out in the field, uh, keeping us informed and, uh, letting us know what conditions to expect. So, um, during that time, Sunday afternoon through Monday morning, um, we successfully, um, accomplished, uh, three rescue missions with the, the specialty squad, um, that we had assembled, um, one of which was a, a car in a sinkhole with, uh, an individual inside, so great work to the rescue squad, uh, for handling that one. And then, uh, at that time, we also were able to assist, uh, with the sheltering needs for two mobile home parks that were evacuated in, in Salisbury. And at that time also, over that night, of course, by now everybody knows about the levee issue in, in Landis, um, so worked very closely with them. Landis did a, a great job of getting their hands around the situation, immediately contacting us, uh, so from the EOC, we partnered together to really figure out the, the problem and a couple of solutions. One of those was preparing, uh, the mass notification system for an evacuation alert, deciding who and what, what area needed to be evacuated and arranging that sheltering so that, uh, if that was necessary, which thankfully it was not necessary, um, that we were, we were ready to handle that influx of, uh, potentially 40 or so, uh, houses in that area. So that was, that was, I think, a, a great success story. And then there was one shelter opened, um, only four, uh, individuals took advantage of that shelter. In the end, those, um, ended up to be the, from the mobile home park. So, um, currently, what, what we're expecting is, uh, still the weather service is warning about the Adkin River. Up, upriver on the Davidson side, uh, the condition is expect, the water level's expected to crest, um, probably tomorrow at some point, if, if not this evening, so we'll be monitoring that. Um, and then what we're really want, uh, watching out for is the downhill effect, uh, the downstream effect that, that will have. Right now, our portion of the, the Adkin is, um, low, it's, it's got some room, room to go here, so, um, right now I'd, I'd categorize that as a low risk, but, uh, you know, we're, we're monitoring. Still, for the general public, um, I was asked what to do earlier today. My advice is stay away from the waterways. Um, the, the banks are just too unstable right now, so if anybody's, um, listening, then, yeah, just stay away from the waterways, don't take chances. And then we're developing a plan right now, a template kind of plan for any municipality, any town, uh, to go through the recovery, uh, steps. So the State is still in response mode, um, hopefully we are, uh, out of that response mode, and we can focus more on recovery, and we're developing a, a template so that the, we can have a consistent approach to recovery throughout the county, and we'll be able to, um, guide and, and assist the, the towns and municipalities through that process.
Chris, are you expecting, uh, small, smaller creeks like Grants Creek, Second Creek, Third Creek to have additional amounts of water, or, um, are they, are they fed by the mountain streams like the Adkin River are, uh, is?
There, there are some, there are some channels, you know, there's so many, uh, that's a hard question. There are so many waterways here in the county that, that are fed from different, uh, they're different tributaries of different larger bodies of water. So, right now, I, I can't say which is, is a higher priority than another, but, um, we're working with each fire department to, to keep an eye on all of them, frankly. I don't want to let anything go by. So there, there is that, um, there is that potential for, for any one of the creeks to, to rise, but, um, the weather forecast, I, I think, is, uh, you know, tomorrow there's a 50% chance, last I saw, of, of rain, but not any significant amounts, definitely not like we saw, uh, Sunday. No.
Any other questions for Chris?
I'd just like to say, um, thank you. I think you did a stellar job for your first big, um, event, and, um, I'm very glad that you were here, and I just really want to compliment your whole team.
Well, thank you. I will definitely pass that along. The whole team was, uh, amazing for, especially, you know, the first time out as a team. It was, it was a great experience and great cooperation, I should say, across the county, too. So, um, good job to everybody.
Hey, Chris, uh, this doesn't happen very often. I, uh, since I've been here, can remember maybe two or three times, Jim and I are the insurance business, so we get all jacked up when something like this is about to happen anyway, but I won't call this a dry run because there was still serious stuff that went on, but being able to, um, kind of observe this, uh, from our position was, uh, really pretty amazing to see, and so, um, we don't know when this is going to happen again. We hope never, that's not reality, but I, I did want to mention a few folks because I, I think there's folks that really deserve, um, uh, some, some recommend, uh, some recognition. Of course, yourself, we're, we're glad you're here. You came from Colorado and the position you were in, and, uh, thank goodness you got a mother-in-law, lived in Greensboro, and you wanted to get, get to North Carolina, otherwise, uh, we don't know how we could've got you, but we're glad you're here.
Yes, sir.
And we hope, hope you're enjoying our community. I sat with Deborah Horn last night for, I don't know, five or six hours, and she's amazing. She had two, um, radios, seems like one was incoming, one was outgoing, and she just controlled everything. So you had fire and rescue and police and DOT and sheriff and cops and all calling Deborah at the Ops Center, and then she would dole out the, uh, directions for, and so it, it worked like clockwork, and she is, um, I, I've not seen her in action like that before, and she, and, uh, she is an amazing lady and a great asset to this community. TJ Brown works in emergency services. He's the weather update guy, kept us all updated on that. If you'd see him working, he had three computers all around him and iPads, and I don't know how he kept it all up, but he was also a big part of conference calls. Alan Kress, uh, from 911 Communications, Eddie Kress, the rescue squad chief, Lenny Cooper from EMS, he was there. I don't know, I think he found a closet to go sleep in last night, but he was there most of the time. Kevin Otten, uh, your, your deputies, we saw them in and out of that facility, and they just did a, a tremendous job, and, and just thanks so much. The forestry service got to meet that guy. They just take off with chainsaws and, and cutting stuff down. DOT, I heard, I had several people call me and said they saw DOT trucks on, on the road cleaning out curbing and cleaning out gutter, um, drains so the roads could drain because there's just no one else to do that. So DOT
Right.
was working, uh, real tight with you guys. Duke Energy and Randy Welch always kept everyone updated. Those guys worked with Cube Hydro to make sure the lake was being drawn down, um, so we didn't have any issues catching up with us too quickly. All the fire departments, municipal and county volunteer fire departments, we heard them on the radio all night. There were calls coming in every 10 seconds, and fire departments were going out all across the county to help people. These are just amazing, uh, people. Municipal police departments and their leadership, uh, we heard municipal leaders on the phone, and especially, uh, shout out to the city and town managers. We know who really runs things, and, uh, those guys were amazing. I'll tell you about one of them here in a second. Red Cross was at the table, they were putting people up in hotels, and then they got the shelters open. Don Bringle from our facilities management, North Carolina Highway Patrol, our state legislators, they've all called us today to see what we need and how we are. We got calls from Richard Hudson and Ted Budd, and I think they're coming here tomorrow to meet with emergency management, uh, folks. Our IT department, Randy Kress, uh, they went and set up the, all the Ops and the technology for the EOC, and I know that you appreciate those guys, they're just behind the scenes, make everything run. Our planning department, Ed Muir and Shane Stewart, uh, and some guy that I met for the first time a couple weeks ago at our, our county, uh, ice cream social, named Columbus Hawks. Now, what kind of name? That's a great name, Columbus Hawks.
Oh, my gosh.
Works in the 911 center, and this guy is a technological genius, I'm told, and this guy was writing programming that helped the county identify, uh, 100 and 500-year flood planes and everyone that lives in it, and got that information out ahead of, ahead of time to municipal, um, leaders and fire departments so that they knew exactly where likely the flooding would happen, and wrote a bunch of other programs just on the fly. This guy is, uh, this guy's a really valuable part of our community. And then Reed Lynn, I want to give, Reed Lynn is the town manager for Landis, and all of you, uh, maybe have heard about the Lake Courier levee. It was on the news last night, but, uh, a lot of emergency folks were descending on Courier Lake, and the levee had breached, and so they were worried about that and evacuating people downstream. And, uh, I don't think this has been in any of the reports, but as the water had crested and gone over the levee, they noticed there was a little whirlpool that was, um, appearing, meaning that possibly the levee down below had, uh, had breached and it was sucking water out, so they were real concerned about the levee breaking. Reed Lynn, they, they tie a rope around his waist and the other end to a tree, and the town manager for Landis goes in the water to check the levee, and, and I talked to him today and I said, I, I said, "I heard, I heard you turned Frogman and you saved Western humanity," and he said, "Well, I don't know about the Western humanity, but I did, I did turn Frogman." So just the dedication of what these folks will do for their community is really a cool thing. I mean, I said, "How did you become the one?" He said, "I was the smallest guy there." And I said, "Well, y'all need to get more rope to send the big guy down," but, uh, so Reed Lynn needs to be given, um, you know, some, some attaboys. And then, um, lastly, Aaron Church, who, um, really makes all this work. Aaron had the foresight to hire you. A lot of these folks that we've read off here, uh, Aaron has hired, and so his fingerprints are all on this, and, uh, Aaron is a, a fantastic manager. And, um, so hats off to Craig and to, uh, Mike, who were on the board that had the foresight to hire, uh, Aaron, and we hope Aaron is here for the rest of his life, and we hope that's a long time. I'll, I'll make one recommendation. Aaron and I, I, I didn't know Aaron was getting one. I asked Thursday, I asked Chief Solis, I said, "I just want to hear what's going on so I can kind of get an idea of where we are in this process. Are we in a mess? Can you get me an old radio that I can just listen?" And if you'll notice, there's blue tape on this radio, and the reason is they, under that blue tape is an orange button. And so they told me, "Whatever you do, don't press the orange button because it'll bring the whole world to an end, or, uh, at least everyone will come running if you press the orange button." So I actually asked them for a piece of tape to put over it so it would divert my attention because it just makes me want to push the orange button when I see it. So I've got blue tape on there to keep me from pressing the button, but, um, this ought to be required for all elected officials. This has been a, a real learning lesson for me. I mean, we, we all really appreciate everyone that we've mentioned here, but I've sat for four or five days with this thing on and listened to what these men and women do, and this is amazing to hear what these folks are doing on our behalf. And I am, I've been appreciative before, but now I'm just in awe of what you guys do. I've heard, they, they put it on a, uh, on scan for me, so I could hear police and fire and rescue and the EOC and all that, and whoever is on, it comes on, so it wasn't just the EOC. I've heard cut fingers, people have fallen, domestic disturbances, alarms going off, medical, fire, shots fired. Now, listen, folks, well, we got a hurricane coming, can you not shoot people? If there's ever a time we're not going to, if our, you know, seriously? This afternoon, there was a car chase clear down to Cabarrus County. I listened to it, I about, I had to pull over the side of the road, I was, I was so nervous, I was scared for everybody involved in the chase, and if there's ever a good reason for there to be construction traffic, they caught them at the construction traffic there in Cabarrus County, they had nowhere else to go, they came up on stop traffic, and our sheriff folks arrested three people, three or four people. During the hurricane issue, I heard cars stranded, basements flooded, creeks flooding, roads washed out, trees down, power lines down, people can't get out of their house, people can't get in their house, people need shelter, power's out, streets flooded, need barricades, sandbags, cows are stranded, horses are stranded, and we even had a call from one community where they said they thought they saw coffins floating up in a, in a, uh, in a cemetery, which turned out not to be the case. So, um, I, I know this wasn't part of, of our meeting today, and this is about this board recognizing what you guys do. It may be 12 more years, or it may be 12 weeks before this happens again, but to see the organization that you put together for a, a real threat will be certainly a good learning experience for when something bad really does happen here. So I asked you here today because we, I wanted you to tell folks what's going on, but I think it's proper that we acknowledge your leadership and the leadership of Aaron Church and these other folks who have done a job that, frankly, most of us could not do. And so on behalf of the county commissioners in Rowan County, we want to say thank you and congratulations on a job well done. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Do we, do we have anyone sign up for public comment? Or that probably was enough public comment. So item number four, public hearing for possible CDBG applications. Scott Shelton from EDC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and, uh, before I get into the presentation, just want to let you know, uh, our President Rod Kreider sends his regrets. He would've been here, but he's on a recruitment mission with, uh, Charlotte Regional Partnership. They're going up to the Midwest for a few days, otherwise he would've been here. As I stated in, um, my memo to the commissioners, uh, wanted to talk a little bit today about community development block grants. Uh, as you know, we're considering requesting the commissioners apply for one for a project we're working on, and, and part of that, uh, part of that procedure for these grants is a, what they call informational public hearing, just a chance for, uh, the citizens to learn about CDBG grants, ask questions, and also provide input as to where they'd like to see this money spent, what grants apply for what. And just briefly about the program itself, the Community Development Block Grant Program is administered by the Department of Commerce. These are federal funds, it's an annual federal allocation to North Carolina from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. The program provides grants for local governments for public infrastructure development. These funds can go for a wide range of development activities to promote the creation or retention of jobs, enhance income levels, and provide local employment opportunities for persons mainly of low to moderate income. This funding eligibility is contingent upon the creation of permanent full-time jobs that meet the following condition: At least 60% of these must be made available to persons whose household income over the previous year was less than 80% of the median income for this area, and that number is based on data published annually by HUD. As I mentioned earlier, the main purpose of tonight's hearing is to get citizen input and identify needs and desired economic development activities. Input from this public hearing will go into future applications submitted by the county for the grant program. If the county decides to apply for these grants, this will be the first of the two public hearings. The second one would actually be for whatever project that was brought before you to apply for these grants. And also, once this hearing is held, uh, the board could apply for funding for up to one year from today's date. And that's pretty much it. I'll be glad to answer any questions or turn over for public comment.
So after we here, have the public hearing, do we need a motion to apply for the C- So, after we have the public hearing, do we need a motion to apply for the CDBG grant from this board?
At this point, no, and I'll get into that later, but not at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions for Scott?
So, these are grants from the state of North Carolina?
They're federal funds that are given to the state. The state would actually administer it, but again, they're federal funds.
We would not have to, typically, do you do matching?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The way it's written is, the local match is, for every $3 of federal money, $1 of local match has to come in, so basically, a fourth. Million-dollar project, then $250,000 is the local match.
So, typically, we'd be looking at larger amounts of money total, such as $1 million or more with these things?
I think so, just because they're dealing with infrastructure improvements, and having pretty high price tags.
All right. All right, we'll open the floor. We'll have a public hearing, and the purpose of the hearing is to obtain citizens' input into the identification of economic needs and desired economic development activities. Input from this hearing will be incorporated into the county's consideration and submission of a CDBG application. So, do we have anyone that would like to come forward and speak about the CDBG application If not, then we'll close the public hearing. And Scott, we really don't need to do anything else from your standpoint on that one?
On that one, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so we'll move to item five. Is that correct?
Yes. And as I had told the chairman before the meeting, in my original memo to the commission, I was going to ask for a second public hearing to go ahead and apply for a CDBG for Project Kodiak. I know you've heard some things about that. It's in regards to that same project that Ian McDonald came to you a few months ago and requested the conditional use permit for the tree view site. You know, it's a large distribution center project. We're talking 700,000 square feet, up to 600 jobs, a $55 million investment. We're really excited about the project. But again, I was going to go ahead and ask for the second public hearing, but it's been brought to my attention that the company has not turned in some paperwork yet to the state that needs to be turned in before we can proceed with this process. So, I'd like to ask the commission at a later date for this public hearing. But I also would like tonight to ask the commission to schedule a public hearing for October 1st for their traditional incentive request, the tax incentive grant, and things like that, just so we can get that in the pipeline and show our support for this project.
All right, so we have a motion to have a public hearing for the actual incentives, and that'll be at the October 1 meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, I'll make that informed motion, and Commissioner Pierce, second. Any discussion? All right, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Scott, anything else?
Not at this point, though if I were to guess, I would think that the request for the public hearing for CDBG would likely come sometime in November, just based on the feedback I'm getting from the state and the paperwork.
Okay.
So, hopefully, we'll be moving ahead with that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to item six, I know we've got a lot of new faces out here, and I think some may have come to speak at public comment and did not realize how to sign up. And I saw some come in after the meeting, and just like on my way here today, got halfway down Old Moxford Road, and it was closed. So, they turned back around and come in. So, I would ask your lenience to see if there's anybody that would like to speak at public comment.
Yeah, absolutely. Do we have any folks that came to speak? Carolyn, do you have the sign-up sheet?
We were told just to come in.
Hmm?
We were told just to come in. We didn't have the funding. There's nobody there.
That's all right. If you want to speak, we'll go ahead and take that time right now. If you'll, and you can do it after you speak. If you'll, so we need to have a record of it, of who's speaking? So, you can come on and speak, and then as you walk away, just sign your name, okay?
My name is Kim Brown, and I actually emailed Mr. Pierce the other day, and he invited us to come up here and speak. I'm sure you guys have probably seen on social media where there's been a lot of grass clippings in the highway where a lot of motorcycle accidents have happened. We are parents of the child. My son, Jason, in the pink shirt, was one of the latest victims in the grass clippings in Rowan County. He was riding his motorcycle on Cool Springs Road in Woodleaf roughly two weeks ago, and a gentleman decided to blow his grass into the road. My son wrecked that night. My son was laying in a ditch with his motorcycle, while the gentleman, who admitted to the Highway Patrol, went, saw my son, turned around, walked back to his house, and shut the door. I don't know what kind of parent, grandparent, aunt, uncle, cousin could honestly leave, or a human being could do that to a child. But we are here tonight to ask that you guys please make an ordinance in the county about grass clippings being blown in the road, because it's not fair to anybody to have to go through that phone call at 10 o'clock at night, knowing the fact that your child's on his way to the emergency room because he's been in an accident because of somebody's negligence. And unfortunately, even though this man admitted to the Highway Patrol, they still cannot find him because there was not an ordinance in the county like there is in the city. And I know that you guys have been talking about that at the last meeting, as well about the grass clippings and the zoning. And so, we ask his parents of Jason, and for anybody else, to please make that ordinance happen, so in that way, the next person riding a motorcycle on our highways isn't affected, or anybody of your family, don't get a phone call, or if you hear on the radio when you're standing there listening of another motorcycle accident in this county. It's not right for us, it's not right for anybody, it's not right for any of y'all. Unfortunately, I don't ride motorcycles. I ride my vehicle, but I do take care of the people that get hurt. I'm a registered nurse at Baptist Medical Center, and I see it every day, not in just Rowan County, in Forsyth County, Virginia, Tennessee. We get a lot of the victims who have really bad skin issues, and they have to be grafted. We take care of those. I'm a neurology nurse, and so I see the brain injuries and the brain trauma. And if somebody could just make that one-fourth effort to please stop these people from doing this, it's honestly, they're lazy, because they don't know how to just vacuum up or blow their grass back in their road. Grass, when it's wet, is like ice, like skating on an arena. And think about a tire going on that, just one, not four. You're going to slide, you're going to wreck. So, we ask that you please, for our family, for your families, or for anybody riding motorcycles, you don't get that phone call. So, we ask that you please make that ordinance happen.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jason Zulilio. I'm the father of this child. I just want to add that I own Twisted Cable Towin', just in Cleveland, North Carolina. I still operate out of Salisbury. I see this every day. I pick up bikes every day. The worst thing about it is, he's 18 years old. He just bought the motorcycle three weeks prior. And I got to the scene after it happened, and there was a lady behind him that had been following him for miles. And she just said that they was just cruising 35 mile an hour in a 55 zone, and all it took was that grass underneath that rear tire, and it just laid it down. There's nothing he could do. But I see it on a daily basis running the roads, picking up these cars and motorcycles. I mean, it's got to stop. It's got to stop somewhere. I mean, granted, it happened the way it happened with the result that we got, he's still here, but something's got to be done. And I just hope and pray you guys will help us out.
All right, thank you very much. Jason, you doing all right?
I'm good.
All right, good. Glad you're okay.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Uh-huh. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Ronnie? All right. Thank you, Commissioner Pierce. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Let's see, financial report.
The first graph shows the annual cumulative revenue comparisons, and we are right on track with prior years. We've so far collected, through the month of August, 25 million. Last year, we had collected 26 million. Again, it's where we expect to be. The reason it's maybe $1 million less is due to property taxes and the way that we book them. So, you'll see that in just a minute.
When you say we're right on track, if you look at '16 and '17, to our eye, it looks like we're way off track.
Right. Well, as I mentioned last, at the last meeting, for the last two years this year and the prior year, there was a change in how mortgage payments are being received by the tax office. So, we're getting, I can't say the majority of that money, but a large portion of that money in very early August, but it's not reported to you guys until the September revenue report.
So, that's actually coming out of escrow accounts? Payment of taxes out of escrow accounts?
Yes, sir. The next graph is the expenditure report. And through the month of August, we have spent 21.2 million. A year ago, it was 19.7 million. And so, it's 14% of budget versus 13% a year ago. And one of the reasons for the increase is, in the month of August, we had three pays. That happens twice a year, and that's $1 million and a half. So, that's the reason for the increase. The next graph is property tax. And this is the same graph that I presented two weeks ago. The information for property taxes that we receive for the prior month, it arrives in our office either from the Rowan County Tax Administration or from the state for vehicle taxes. And we receive that usually the 10th through the 15th. And when the agenda deadline is the 7th, then that information's not available. The next graph is sales tax. And this is through the month of May, and we have received 22.2 million. A year ago, it's 21.6 million. And so, that's on track where we expected it to be this year. If you have any questions?
All right. Anything else?
That's all I have.
I'd like to welcome Mike Caskey's younger brother, Michael. Glad you made it. All right, we have budget amendments been provided. Commissioners, do we have a motion to accept the budget amendments?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Say aye, Ken.
All in favor, say aye. Welcome, Mike. (laughter)